So if you do a quick extrapolation of that, and I'm doing this mostly in my head, we would be receiving about three and a half million dollars, thirteen and a half million dollars, sorry, worth of treatment capacity a day for free. A treatment facility for water of a million and a half gallons a day would be about five million bucks. So for free, we are giving up around eighteen and a half million dollars' worth of sewage treatment capacity and water treatment capacity. From my vantage point, that's a lot to give up for the town of Waukesha.
I see nothing, I repeat, I see nothing. I see nothing that reflects that annexation does not have to happen. This is something that you indicated, Mr. Merrick, in regards to, basically, what I got out of it was to be treated on an individual basis. There's nothing that came signed, sealed, and delivered memorialized to us to show us that our residents will not have to annex. And given that annexation, that throws the word "free" right out the window.
Well, I'm just going to read to you the email communication from Dan Duzniak from Wednesday, May 4th. Annexation of town property into the city of Waukesha is not required to obtain water service from the Waukesha Water Utility. In addition, we've all had these lists since 1999 of the 20 properties that were given water or sewer or both and remain in the town of Waukesha without annexation. And conversely, the number of properties that were forced to annex into the city of Waukesha from the town in order to gain water or sewer services is zero. What more would you be looking for?
Can you print the motion? Because there's a motion and a second on this issue.
Sure, but I don't have a side idea.
Do you want to give her the detail?
Sure.
Well, not just that there's all pipe wells in non-town property. Operated by the city on town property. Or to be abandoned on successful application for Great Lakes. Because of conditional inclusion into the city. Only if the city is successful. The Great Lakes conversion. The town retains the right. This decision is different than the ones we've talked about in the past, as I mentioned earlier, because we're bringing the sewer into it. And although may have been implied in the past, Brian, and I'm not trying to doubt it, it was something that I think there was a focus solely on water. And I will say that as I look at our town map and understand our options for sewer, which is a, even as Bruce Baker has said on three separate occasions, the issue that we're facing here is not necessarily the need for water. It is really more focused on sewer. And we would be really hard-pressed to serve our community without opening our own sewer treatment plant to serve the community at large. We'd never hit, from a cost-effectiveness, he'd never get to these northern areas, the Canes Terrace, some of the areas out further to our west, town line row. It would be, I think, foolish to say that we could service them from a sewer capacity piece. Water's a different issue. I think that we can provide that. I still believe that we have a primary source, which is our private wells in our yards. I believe we have a current backup source, which is our ability as a municipality to put in local municipal wells to serve communities, whether it's subdivisions or commercial developments. But if your septic goes bad and some of the older subdivisions don't have a secondary site identified with building, some of the newer subdivisions, somewhere back in the 90s, you were required to find a secondary site before you could build your homes. So you already have a primary and a secondary sanitary system on your lot. For those older homes, they don't have that. So as I, one resident's comments on Saturday really stuck with me, was the comment about go take a long solitary walk and contemplate this issue. I'm really focused on asking about the sewer. What do we do if the Canes Terrace were to really have a problem with septic? We wouldn't be able to serve them. Where the city would be able to. They're there. It's reasonable. It's cost-effective. I don't believe for a minute that it's free. It's free until you hook up. It's also free in the town until we would run pipes out there and hook up, and then you pay that bill too. So there is no quote-unquote "free lunch," unless you use the thing that's, you know, free. So I'm inclined to look to include a large portion of the town. I came in today with a thought process that we would potentially look at the map in two separate areas, not to, you know, everybody said there's the blue, there are the haves, and everybody else is the have-nots. And that wasn't the thought process behind it, clearly, and more is my process today, that. But I thought there's an area that's clearly better served by putting it in the city sewer area and an area of the town that would be served by putting it in the Big Bend Sewer Treatment area. I still maintain that I think that that answers a couple of my problems with this, and that is, one is the planning aspect. One resident that I spoke with on Saturday was quite adamant, just put us all in, put us all in. And when I said, hey, you're up on an empty lot, you expect homes to be built there, what about a 32-unit apartment complex? And they both sort of stepped back and said, well, gosh, no, that would hurt the value of our home. So planning is important to you. Yes. Okay, well, it's something we've been trying to do. We will, and I think John will attest, the city will never acquiesce to that position of giving us the authority to plan our developments in our area. We do have a way, I think, to do that, which is to utilize the Big Bend option to provide some service along that corridor. I think the thing that's going to change my mind, Brian, from when I sat down here, I would have told you I would have preferred to chop the town into two sections and put a portion of the town into the Waukesha Water Utility Sewer System and put a portion of the town primarily the south and the east, which would be more appropriately served by Big Bend. I think it would be cheaper, as effective, and I think cost-effective, because we could control some of the development and keep those properties in the town on 164. However, something that you've provided, which is, maybe I missed it, I'm willing to say over the half, because I'm sure I've seen this email a couple of times. The email of May 4th here, 2011, inclusion in the water service area, this is item number four. Inclusion in the water service area does not prevent the town from obtaining and serving town residents with an alternate water supply through a town-run utility or other alternative supplies. It only allows for an option for town residents. That's a pretty, I think it gives us a possibility of saying that we can look to go in and at the exact same time, look to pull an area where we could provide advantageous solution to a developer, staying in the town and using Big Bend as a sewage treatment facility and high-cap well, instead of going and annexing into the city to develop those commercial properties. When you talk about annexation, this is, I guess, from my fellow board members, when you look at number one in this email, you know, they put the parentheses around "required", and that always means that "required" means something else. And I still think that we, for me, I'm going to make the decision that any property that needs water, they're probably going to conditionally improve your access to water with the caveat that you will give the city. That's just how I feel about it. So this becomes, can we provide some development and some advantages to connecting with Big Bend while getting our hands around opening up the opportunity for the city? If we were to get, I'd like to look at the motion. I think we're accomplishing a number of goals. If they agree to this, they're going to close their high-capacity wells in the town. They'll stay out of them. If we get them to agree to this and they get Great Lakes water, we still don't lose the right or sacrifice the right to open up negotiations with Big Bend and protect 164, which is a significant piece for me. I guess I can look for more feedback from others to put the thoughts together.
Couple of questions. Since 1999, you had indicated, Mr. Merrick, that there's been virtually X number of people that were given water by the city and not having to annex. Were there any people, any residents since 1999, that were mandated to annex if they wanted water?
Zero. Zero.
Everybody's leaning very heavily on Mr. Duzniak, May 4th of 2011, his opening statement, annexations of the town property into the city of Waukesha is not required to obtain water service from the Waukesha Water Utility. That came from Dan Duzniak, and I understand his position with the city. Now, in April 25th of this, a couple of weeks back, if you will, there is no indication at all on the annexation issue that Dan Duzniak did a couple of years ago. That's an important item, and I see nothing in this April 25th letter from Ed Henshaw that indicates, in his bullet points, which I consider a bullet point, nothing with annexations. Could you help me out with that?
Sure. That's going to be part of our motion. That's the, we'll put that, we can amend our motion and put that in there.
Okay, now, if this motion would pass, we would put that on what you indicated that you had already sent to Ed. Okay? That's kind of like closing the gate after your cows got out type of thing. Wouldn't you want to memorialize something like that prior to any, yes, yes? Yes, that's my concern.
I think what Chairman Merrick is saying, Mike, and I think you bring up a good point, we've got, we're going to address it a bit, the motion in here and what he's saying, your point, which I think is a good one, and I would say we would put exactly the verbiage in there that Dan Duzniak gave in his email to us on May 4th. So that basically needs, and we can do that by amendment to this motion, to put that in as the fourth item here.
I don't like the word "required." Okay, so I don't know if I'd want to use Dan Duzniak's verbiage. The other thing I'd like to, in this particular motion that's ahead of us right now, I don't see anything in there about piecing out the town. Is this all or nothing type of thing? Is that something that's going to be discussed at this point?
Well, the offer from the city is an all or nothing. It is, well, it's not entirely. There is a small portion by the Vernon Marsh that's not included, but it is as delineated by Sewer PAC, yes.
I have a question also with this May 4th. You read number one, that says we're not required to annex to obtain sewer water and sewer and water from the city. But the sentence before that says that these were points that were discussed. It never says that they were decided on, agreed upon, or signed on, that I can see.
Right. This is the memorialization of the conversation between Dan Duzniak and Angie Mansack. This is what they.
Okay, so then, at the meeting on Saturday, you said you had documents that proved we were not going to have to annex into the city. And when I emailed Jamie on Sunday night and requested that information, she forwarded that to you, and this is the document I got. As far as I know, this is no agreement.
Well, Larry, you've got it in front of you, from the general manager of the water utility. He's one of three people that are authorized to act on the council of Waukesha's behalf to negotiate a water and sewer service agreement with the town of Waukesha. He put it in writing here. He put it in writing on a question and answer dated the 20... I believe it was May 20th of 2011. It's also in writing at that point, and this is an agreed, these are the questions that the town asked, that were answered by Mr. Duzniak. You've also got a list of 20 properties that have required water and/or sewer services from the city that are currently town property since 1999, that have not been required to annex. And there are zero properties that were mandated to annex in order to receive those same services. What else are you looking for? You know, I've been pretty hard on this issue. And I don't want people to think that Joe will flip on this. This is a very different agreement. The focuses that I've had about protecting our right to plan, protecting our well, water supply, are still on the table. It's conditional. We've made a lot of headway in the last 35, 40 days. One of those headways is the DNR agreeing to allow our approval to be contingent. They've never done that. We have been asking for two years. They never gave us that until recently. The ability to still get with Big Bend and provide advantages to staying in the town is something that, until, Brian, until you pointed it out here, I want to say it again, until you pointed it out here, it was something that was bothering me, and I had inquired about how do we, can we still do this? What do we have that proves that? Putting it as a condition, we're saying here with this letter, we'll agree, but it's conditional on the protecting of our rights to still develop a relationship with Big Bend. Nothing says that we don't get. What if they come back and they say, hey, we want to annex all 164 because we want the tax revenue? I mean, maybe we won't work that out with them. But it protects our option to go and do that. And I think that that is a pivotal difference between where we were a week ago and where we are today. So I think there's two big differences already here. One is the right to not have to ask to get out of the water service area. It's guaranteed to us if they don't get Lake Michigan water, we're not in the service area. That map becomes our map again. That's key for me, because it protects, I think, protects our wells. If they don't get Great Lakes water, they're going to come after our water as a plan B. I didn't want to have to ask DNR or Sewer PAC to pretty please draw us out of the map. They've given us something that says you won't have to ask. The default position is there. You're out if they don't get Lake Michigan water, period. Great. We have that in writing. It's pretty letterhead and signed, whatever. If we send this letter over and we get the ability to negotiate still with Big Bend and provide that, I think that's a huge victory, because it gives us the ability to control some planning through positive stuff instead of some negative stuff. So I like that. And I like the fact that they have to agree to cap their wells that are here and get out. That, again, protects our high-capacity wells. It is my number-one goal to protect the water supply we drink from today is our first primary goal. Whether land annexes or not is secondary, but our first primary goal is to protect our wells. We've done that by getting the letter from the DNR and by getting the city out if they get Lake Michigan water. So I like that aspect of it. The planning aspect is something that I will never quit on, because I think you have the right to not want to have a 32-unit apartment building next to your $400,000 home. And we should be trying to figure a way for that solution to come to be. We're not going to get it with the city. They won't even, I mean, I gotta tell you, Dan Duzniak won't even talk to me anymore. Okay? That's how many times I've tried to go down that path. So the best way for us, in my opinion, to accomplish that goal is to create competition. And I think that that competition is Big Bend, and we need to go after that.
Mr. Chairman, can I just have a minute? And I'm enjoying the discussion tonight, hopefully a fruitful discussion. I'd like to spend just a minute to address Mike, Larry, and Joe. First of all, Mike, and we wandered into this a bit, I think your point and concern is well-taken, that our response to the city needs to, again, memorialize, remind, reinforce that annexation of town property, that the city is not required to obtain water service from the Waukesha Water Utility, and we can, we have agreement here, we can deal with that as a simple amendment to the motion that's on the floor. For your thought and consideration, I really would suggest using exactly, and I know you said you don't like the word "required," and I know it's in quotes, and that leaves the potential for a bit of wiggle room or whatever, but I would use exactly the verbiage that is in here. That was offered to us by Dan Duzniak over two years ago, and a little bit responding to your thought, Larry, and I, I mean, I don't have an inordinate amount of experience in negotiations, but I've got some. But place that you've got to kind of start from, a beginning point, is having a measure of good faith and trust in others. It's really hard to negotiate anything if you don't start out with that premise. Now, if somebody wants to draw that back, I think, I'm assuming the board would be unified in saying, hey, that was offered in bad faith or whatever. That's a stepping stone forward. So I would be comfortable, and I want to address Joe first before putting anything into motion, but I would be comfortable with including that in our motion. And even if that gets put into a letter or sent forward or something, maybe that should even be a reminder or attach his email to it that that came from him, not from us. And I think we can get over that hump. I want to spend a minute, Joe, if I can, just even respond to you, not in any particular order, but I appreciate very much your thoughts and comments tonight. I mean, obviously, you have given a lot of thoughtful consideration to this. I want to tell you one thing, even with the thing I just passed out at the table here, and I'm reminded of a word that you've kind of used, a phrase to us in recent meetings a little bit, that I got to tell you, I'm a little bit fond of, and I think you call it "sneaking one past the goalie." I've heard it said that a couple of times. I want to tell you, in good faith, this thing that I distributed tonight was not an attempt to sneak one past the goalie. If you're going to ask me, and I remember receiving this email communication two years ago, and remember exactly what it said, I'm going to tell you, no, okay? I don't. I mean, we've gone through so much paperwork. I bumped into this late this afternoon. I mean, had it been earlier, I'd have sent it along to Jamie for distribution or whatever. So the "sneak one past the goalie," this clearly seems to reflect to me that you, and Mike and I, as well as Everett and Angie, received this. I don't have any doubt that that happened. I think it speaks for itself. I did not remember that all those things were put in in that form. That's right. When I went on to the board, I think you're a little bit hitchhiking on number four, that talks about inclusion of the water service area does not prevent the town from obtaining and serving town residents with an alternative water supply. The town run, it appears to give some flexibility. I mean, at the point in time in which this was authored, on May 4th, 2011, the sewer service, sanitary sewer service area was not a part of the discussion, because the issue had not even been raised. I don't remember the exact timeframe, but that was a year later or something, that basically, and that's not a town choice here, that Sewer PAC, I mean, they're a designated agency, they have authority and everything, that they were going to match those things up. So that wasn't even on the radar screen at the point in time in which this came to be. But to the extent that that appears to provide some possibility for flexibility on the water, if you want to parlay that into the sewer type of thing, I say, why not? Having had said that, I mean, the Big Bend thing, and I've got my engineer's hat on from it, I'm not sure whether that is viable in terms of their capacity, in terms of the cost of it, and so forth, but I'm inclined to support the motion, because I don't think that that ought to be a poison pill or a deal breaker, whether or not if we want to retain some flexibility in doing that. How, as a practical matter, that works if we were to try to be taking water from one place and sending sewage to the other one, and I'm sure there's a lot, not sure, there's a lot of open questions there, but I say, why not put that in place? So having had said that, I appreciate the thoughtful consideration you're giving to that. I yet am going to support the motion, and I'll give others an opportunity to speak. I do think, at a minimum, we need to put that amendment in there about the annexation language. Again, my recommendation would be to use the exact verbiage that Dan Duzniak used on May 4th, 2011, so that doesn't end up becoming equivalent. I mean, the reality of it is, if we were to move forward with this, they say, on a case-by-case basis and so forth, I mean, there's not going to be absolute guarantees about that, but I would think if we work in good faith, we've got some historical precedents there for providing sewer and water without the requirement of annexation. We may not have the strongest hand in the world, but I think we'd be in a pretty good position to try to resolve those things on a good-faith basis. So I'll support the motion, hopefully with the inclusion amendment that we talked about.
You would accept this inclusion? Absolutely. And I would accept that.
Well, if we're moving on, I, I'm sorry.
Why don't we just read it in?
Okay.
Will we read the entire motion?
No, just the amendment, it's fine.
The amendment is to read annexation of town property into the city of Waukesha is not required to obtain water service from the Waukesha Water Utility.
I'll also move that amendment.
Once you go all in, how are you going to stop the development and city annexation up and down 164?
It's out of order, sir.
You're serving us.
I'll address the thought, which is, Big Bend does provide our best opportunity to develop 164 in the town of Waukesha. Every other development, if we do anything there, we'll most certainly end up in the city. And I think this creates a competitive marketplace for us as a town to go after that development and negotiate with Big Bend. And I, there is no perfect solution here. We have to change the map. Have to. We have no choice in it because we can't provide sewer to everybody. There's half the town. We can't bring sewer to everyone. So when you come to that conclusion, you can't, physically, you can't do it. And when you look at, and I'm going to tell you, I've got, this is Big Bend's sewer plan right here. I've studied this just as hard as I have studied all of the other things that have come before us. The numbers that they're talking about are exactly correct, okay? They don't have a lot of capacity. They're not intending, if you talk to Big Bend, they will tell you that they're intending on hooking up their residents. They're intending to hook up 164 businesses only to the city. So if they're going to do that, we're going to face annexation from them as well. They're a village. So the best opportunity for us truly to develop 164 and keep that land here in the town is to kind of play both sides of the rope. We have the option then to go and work with the city, which gives us kind of the hammer to go back to Big Bend and say, hey, we'd rather do this with you because we think we can keep that property here. But they don't have a lot of capacity. We would never, shoot, could we even serve 70% of the town, 50% of the town in Big Bend with their lack of capacity? Because they're not building a big plan. That service area currently is only Big Bend is their village boundary line they're intending to serve. So when you look at that, we have a limited opportunity to work with them and run sewer. They're starting now to run pipe down 164. We have an opportunity to join them in that way, bring those pipes down, pay for some of that infrastructure today in the hopes that we can then work with the landowners to develop it in and keep it in the town, which protects planning, which protects tax revenue. But it is going to be a developer's dream because they're going to have three municipalities fighting over them. And we're going to be the ones saying, stay here. We offer the lowest tax base. But it is, you know, I've spent a lot, a lot of time looking at these options. This is the one, the linchpin that was missing was the one that Brian provided tonight. And I will tell you, have on the Bible. I don't remember seeing this. It was a conversation that I had with John right there and then before the meeting started, was can we get it in writing that we can go to Big Bend and work on that development while we're in the service area? John assured me he could. Brian's provided evidence that that seems likely to be something we can do. This approval is conditional that those two ends come together. And I think that gives us the best opportunity to provide sewer across the scope of the town. I don't think we're ever going to need water, but we'll get that. But we can then look at that development of 164. To me, if you ask me, what am I making my decision on? It's that planning aspect, the development of 164. We only get that option by keeping that property with Big Bend. And that's going to be something that we'll see on the next agenda, something that I want to get started on tonight. It's not something I want to wait on.
And don't give the city any access to it.
Additionally, in reference to that, let me throw this at you. If you're a developer, you're going to build a Walgreens or an Aldi's, you're on town property, you have the option of attaining municipal services while remaining in the town, and you have the option of town taxes at 1.88, or you could annex into the city, receive the exact same services, but pay 10 bucks in taxes. Which one are you going to take? I own some commercial property? I'm going to stick in the town. It's, the property owner is the guy that's ultimately responsible and ultimately is going to be either more profitable or less profitable. Why wouldn't you stay with the lower tax entity? That's how we're going to keep those properties in the town, is the ability to service them with sewer and water. If we don't have the ability to service them with sewer and water, they're leaving. They have to leave. They have no choice.
And again, you know, we're, we may disagree because I believe we have a primary and a secondary today. So I think this whole water thing is like, you know, it's like the Hail Mary. It's the third, third option. Because it'd be more cost-effective for town, I think, to put in localized municipal lines and serve those residents closer to than to hook up with the city. I've studied that and worked out the numbers, but that's my indication. So I think the water's the third piece there. For me, this is all about your sewer. What do we do if your septic starts failing? And that's a real concern because you don't end up with a lot of options. I mean, these holding tanks, the county, try and get a holding tank agreement with them. I mean, they'll just scream at you for all day long. I mean, it's a real problem. And we have a lot of older homes in the area that don't have that second site. It could be a real concern, and it is not about the water. It is about your septic. Eventually, your septic will cause your water to go bad. I mean, you know, I think really if we focused on the sewer, for me, that was the primary change in the way I'm looking at this, was that aspect of it.
It is my understanding that the sewer, water and the water have to align both maps. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct.
So if we turn over the entire town, both of them go?
Statutorily, sewer and water are the same map, yes.
And that's just for clarification, the water map requires, is required to match the sewer map. The sewer map is not necessarily required to match the water map, but this juncture where we are today, because of the Great Lakes Compact, Sewer PAC is going to require, the DNR is going to require them to be the same. They can, statute, the sewer map can be different as long as the language that's there today will stay the same. Doesn't have, the sewer points to the water, the water does not, or the water points to the sewer, the sewer doesn't point to the water in this section.
I'd like to make a statement. There's just no way I'm going to give the city water. I do have a feeling about our northwest corner, Comanche, that area, north and west. I'd like to discuss that, but that would be for sewer only. Or maybe sewer and water. But I cannot see entering the town, the entire town into an agreement, a contract, call it what you wish. And the way the motion states, that we move to accept the letter of April 25th. And then, yes, we have a few amendments, if you will. But I guess I don't sign my name now and expect to see something in print at a later date, the way I want to see it before I sign my name. It just doesn't make sense to me. And quite honestly, the fact that we have to align with our water and sewer both, it looks like there's, it really limits the negotiation here completely. It wasn't really a point prior to this. Apparently, it has become a point.
Mike, two things. When you say that you're not going to sign your name to it until you see it in print, that's what the motions are about. So that it is in print.
All right. Well, they accept the fact that there's no way our residents are going to have to annex. Mr. Duzniak made that clear. Mr. Henshall's names on this April 25th letter, did Mr. Duzniak inform Mr. Henshall that this is what he said back two years ago? Or did Mr. Henshall say, gosh, nobody ever told me about that. Certainly isn't in my bullet points in this letter.
That's what we're going to send back to him. It's going to be, that letter, this letter is going to be accepted, conditioned on the items that we're going to vote on coming up here.
But now by sending something back to them, and they say, yes, we agree, we just lost our town, our entire town.
We didn't lose the entire town. We're gaining the option for the entire town to have sewer and water services. We're not losing anything. We're gaining. Additionally, water and sewer have always been tied together. They've always been hand in glove. They have had to have been.
Well, they, I mean, early on, they weren't. There was quite a discussion about, and just as Brian pointed out back when this letter was written, we weren't told, hey, they had to match. And then there was a ruling that came out, I think it was the DNR, Brian, that said, yeah, you have to make a match. The language was that they had to be consistent with each other. Mike, I will offer to you that I don't, I want to put this. We won't lose the development on 164 as long as we create a competitive advantage to developing it here in the town. Some of that competitive advantage is our tax base. We have to be able to then look at how we develop sewer and provide those sites with water capacities that they'll need to run whenever business ends up going in there. Because that'll be the primary way that they'll get water if we keep it out of the city area. It's through some municipal wells. We might have some advantages. We don't have any, I can get into lots of things on ways that we could create advantages to keeping that in the town. You know, but the key is we're going to have to be able to provide sewer and water on. And I think we get there with this. When you look at what residents do, you know, my home, I have direct access. I am able to to the city of Waukesha. It's me and state land, so I could actually go and annex and run for mayor. When I look at that, what keeps me from doing that is our tax base. But it's an option. It's a personal choice. And I have a kind of a weird thing about land rights. It's your personal choice. It's your land right. It comes with your property. If you choose to annex, that is your, only your decision. Nobody, you know, nobody can force you. Nobody can take you, kick you in the screen. But it's an option you have. We as a town, we have to provide a way to say that that's not a good option. It's not the best option. And that takes work, takes planning, and it takes presenting options to give you the services that you want and a cost that's more competitive because that's what land is. So I think when you say about how do we keep land in the town, we have to do it by being smarter, by being better, and by providing services that people want for a price that people are willing to pay. And I tell you, this is a very different position where I'm at than where I was walking in at. And it is all about this May of 2011 email. I mean, this thing is the holy grail, as far as I'm concerned.
Can I just make a comment or kind of observationally? And I appreciate your concerns, Mike, but what, we're putting back the way the motion now stands, that first provision about high-capacity wells operating in the city of Waukesha, including lather wells to be abandoned upon a successful application for Great Lakes water diversion, that's not the oldest issue, but it's certainly not the newest one. I mean, largely, I think Chairman Merrick and Supervisor Bansky forged that ground in your meeting, I want to say roughly a month ago, and I may be wrong on the date, that, I believe, at least in concept, was agreed to in good faith by the people of the city that you talked to. So one would hope that that will be accepted. Again, the conditional inclusion in the water service area and in the sewer service area only if they're successful in obtaining Great Lakes diversion. I can't imagine that that is going to be a disqualifier because that's largely been agreed to and in place for some nine months. The provision about the annexation there, and I simply remind the chair that my motion was not seconded on that, we hadn't voted on that. But if that were to be included, I mean, that is their words that we're simply putting back to them. The only thing that I see that's got a bit of a new dimension or new twist to it is about trying to retain our rights to negotiate with the Village of Big Bend for sewer services, as Joe has spoken to. I'd like to think that there will be a way that we can get over the top of that mountain. So that the place we're at, Mike, I think is, we're kind of doing a public negotiation here. And I think we would perhaps all confess, maybe we don't have the greatest skill sets of doing that. We're doing our best, but most of this is good faith type of thing. So it goes back to them for their acceptance of those. And like I said, three of those, I think, have already been basically ingrained to. So I think we can get to that place. What we're at, dealing with here, folks, is not the art of the perfect. It's the art of the possible. And I think that's at hand.
I've got a hypothetical. Suppose we sign in for the whole town, water and sewer. In the year 2017, the city of Waukesha does receive Lake Michigan water. Got a property of 30 acres on Highway 164. Time for me to sell and move on to California. Well, guess what? Big Bend isn't up and running, but city of Waukesha is up and running. By golly, it's, I'm going to go for the biggest bang for my buck. I'm going to annex the city of Waukesha, even though it says, oh, no annexation is needed. I am still not buying that. Needless to say, our Big Bend theory goes right out the window because somebody beat us to the punch.
Can I, Mike, answer that, Mike? The following agenda has an item to authorize us to, like, immediately start to negotiate with Big Bend. Like, I've already called the village presidents two and a half, three weeks ago and started having some discussions about their capacities, discussions about who else they're negotiating with. Maguano is an example, is negotiating with them for access to their system. They're already starting to lay pipe along 164, which is in phase one. We could start to pursue laying a pipe and putting that in a capital investment plan and start to look at that. I think that's part of the process that we need to go through when we get to this next piece of to say, hey, let, we can't wait. You're right. Because when the switch gets flipped, we need to be ready to compete the day the switch gets flipped, if not sooner. What's keeping 164 from being developed today is access to sewer. It's access to water. I can tell you, I sat with Woodman's. We lost Woodman's. We looked at, I mean, I sat back there in the back room with Dan Buchholz and myself, trying to identify parcels before the Woodman's was announced in Waukesha. And we physically couldn't find a place because we couldn't offer we couldn't offer them sewer. Could we have gotten Woodmans? I don't know, but it would have been an interesting conversation to talk about our tax rates versus the city's tax rates if we could have offered them sewer. They want to put oil change place in there, they want to put a car wash, we didn't have that option on our table, so we lost, I mean, it was, to use the city's words, it was non-starter, but we had them sitting at the table to talk about the town. I felt handicapped talking, because we have land, we couldn't put something in. That's the kind of development that I'd like to not have to walk away from in the future, but bring back to a landlord and say, hey, I've got a developer who's interested in the town, you know, let's talk about how that looks and works. So, I, I, I think that, you know, that would be my, my answer to that, is we can't wait, we need to do it now. It would be smart for us to do it now, because, well, they're bringing pipe north. The only question is, where are they going to stop?
Joe, we talked about this, and this is, of course, after this particular meeting, but this particular motion is on the table right now. Basically, we're looking for a vote at some point in time and then talk about something after it? That's the cart before the horse, in some respects.
To some degree, but they all, all of these issues are working together, and they're working together for our advantage, they're working together, together for the town's advantage. We're not losing anything, we're gaining the opportunity to keep businesses, to keep land in the town, supply services that we didn't have the opportunity to supply before.
I just saw from coming, we talked about hypothetical 2017, I mean, let's talk a little bit about that, and assume for a minute that this were to go forward and put in, be put in place. This doesn't mean that negotiations with the city of Waukesha are over, in some regards they'd be, but beginning. What the goal has to be here is to keep properties and keep land in the town, so it can be developed in the town, so we can control the nature and type of development. The board that's making those decisions will probably look a whole lot different in 2017 than it does now. That'll be for other people to carry the ball forward. That's the way it works, and there may need to be some flexibility and creative concepts and ideas in terms of zoning and densities and that type of thing. Whatever those future boards are going forward, they're going to have to put their best thinking caps on, skills on, and that type of thing, to try to keep people in the town, and we want them to develop in the town. That's going to be a challenge moving forward. We're not going to be able to resolve any of that if we had an unlimited amount of time to do it and wrap all of that up, but we want to put ourselves in the best position to do that. I think Chairman Merrick spoke to it, if we can get the provision in there that annexation is not a requirement to obtain sewer and water, and if we are reasonable about the kinds of things that we will allow, including densities and that type of thing, particularly closer to the city limits, then people who are looking to develop property should want to develop it in the town, so they can basically pay the buck eighty-eight in municipal taxes to the town of Waukesha instead of nine to 10 bucks to the city of Waukesha. I mean, the marketplace will look at that thing, will figure it out. So, there's going to be a lot of challenges going forward, but I think this proposal puts us in the best position to do that. And I'll, I'll tell you, it's not without risk. I'm not going to tell you that we're going to be able to, to totally lock down 164. We need to compete for it, and I'll emphasize, we need to compete, and, and that puts the landlord in the best possible situation, because as I said, now you have three municipalities by law, right? But, you know, getting, getting to that point where we, we now have a horse in the race with being able to connect to Big Bend, and I, I feel good about this decision, and I, there's a lot of work ahead of us to get with Big Bend, get some things put together there, but I think that's, that is our best course of action to really make this happen. And that, that's where my opinion is.
I totally agree with both of you, and this is, in the respect of, there's nothing, I would love to compete with somebody, as long as the ground rules are equal. Right now, my concern is to make sure those ground rules are equal and ironclad protection to make that happen. That's what it's all about in my mind.
And I, I quit protections, but I want to say, I think this letter, our offer letter, so we sent them an offer letter before, right, and we said, pay us this and do that, and they said, I'll send. We're sending them another letter that says we are, we're going to, oh, well, with some amendments that are pretty, that are pretty secure. Get out of our high-capacity wells, they've yet to put that in writing. They've said it, but they've yet to put it in writing. So, this tells them, you got to put it in writing. If they don't put it in writing, we're right back there. So, if they, any of these things don't happen, we're, we're right back there, and maybe they tell us to bomb sanding.
The only thing I don't get is they've already rejected our 24th, now we're adding another stipulation of getting free water and sewer, which was never mentioned in, let me make sure, on the twen, on April 25th, that was never in that document, but now, and they didn't accept this, but now we're throwing another one in there, and they keep telling us we're done negotiating it. How do we expect for the new one with more stipulations to go through?
Let me understand your question, Larry. What, you're, which, which new stipulations are we putting in?
We're putting in a new stipulation that we're going to get city water and sewer without annexing, and as far as I know, that's not in this letter.
It's not in that letter, however, it is in multiple previous communications, and it has been discussed both on April 22nd and in other conversations I've had, both with Ben Henshaw and with Dan Duzniak.
Why was it, I mean, but what I'm saying, it was never included in this one, in the written document, and they're saying no to this, and then now we're expecting them to say yes to this with more?
Well, no, they're saying, they're saying yes to the April 25th letter. The April 25th letter, they've agreed to. What they haven't, the only, what they didn't agree to was an unending tax payment to the town to a development agreement that would give the town the ability to decide what was developed in city land, that's what they said no to. They've already agreed to a